Part two of the agenda meetings.
All up and going, okay. Thank you Betty. Marvin doing okay?
See if they can go back in. I think I'd be scared.
Yeah.
Because it was a doctor's call.
That was a doctor's.
The hole or whatever.
Oh really?
Yeah, it had a shock.
Well, maybe he crashed.
Shock was like.
Great comment said that it was from a stint.
Yeah, the die.
From a bed stint or something, yeah.
They're putting the die in and somehow bubbles or burst in. So yeah, I mean already going to your heart, it's like holy crap. And apparently his heart doctor was in the building at the time. They moved him, he and I guess got all the stuff and everything, legal stuff. So it was a good thing he was there because apparently he doesn't do that part of it. I didn't know there was a difference. I thought they did, my doctor didn't at all, but.
Yeah.
But, so we'll find out today.
Oh, I got plantar fasciitis in my foot.
So how'd it go with that?
I don't know.
Much?
I might give it a couple weeks and then take it off and see how it's doing. Or are you good?
Oh my God. Who stirred him up? Did you stir him up?
Who? I scared who off?
Stirred Jeff up.
No, I didn't stir him up. Holiday pay increase?
No, college.
I think I found a female out. She's, Dad gave me yes or no yet. We got some job, you all approve of it. She's got like eighteen years experience in probation parole. She asked me.
For a work release?
Not work release, but for that shackles.
Monitoring.
I need, I need some.
Oh, I got plantar fasciitis in my foot.
I don't know what that is, but it sounds painful. But we're not gonna shoot until January, so I wanna make sure about pain. I wanna get hours bars so we don't get new three. You know, so that gives you time at that time here. Because you do have to walk and move.
I can walk, I can take this off, it's not a big deal.
Nobody cut over anything?
No, not yet. Because I've heard it, sometimes that doesn't work.
Anytime you keep one on the scope, that's their hands. If you want to hear today's morning one o'clock. What, are you on one o'clock too?
I'm at one ten or something. That's fine.
You be calling me Friday when they need air from Ferguson.
Oh, I wouldn't worry about that. I got a bunch of animal left over from deer season. Send them all to Wardsville.
Which way they coming out, seventy or fifty?
Thought somebody said through fifty, because they was coming through the land and.
Have they said how many of them there are?
Oh, I'm sure the diminished as they go. There be a bunch of them getting a line. They'll be waiting till they get right down here and then.
Well, they said they started with a hundred, Doc here to you. By the time they get to Washington or Union now, they're down to about ten.
But they'll drop a whole bunch.
They get ten miles outside town and jump up to a couple, huh?
Yeah, let every, if they're blocking the fucking roads they need to ride, every damn one of them idiots.
Hey, we're on, we're on again here.
I don't care. That's, that's the way I feel. I was wanting to send a sheriff.
No, she'll be gone. You can sit there, Don.
I hope we have cocktails in the afternoon.
Is that a bill?
Yeah. Sam, we're gonna talk.
What you gotta do is say you can have whatever you want.
And then we can go home.
Yeah, get my ass out of here.
That's how they are. Watch them. Gotta be careful, Sam.
That's good. Never trust.
Oh, she's taking, she's going to Washington State, Washington.
Oh, really?
I've set courts in tribal.
Never leave tribal.
No, you got, only I look at that equipment is, we've got that printer for that, those cards and all that stuff's on it. That's still working good, so why do we have to buy all this stuff that we don't have to? We just have to do the doors. Let's just do the doors and not do the rest of it.
Hey, y'all got a consultant to take care of that. I'm no part of it.
We do have a consultant. We're gonna get one.
We gotta come.
I volunteer my services.
No, not good enough. You don't meet the criteria.
I can go on the internet and become an expert in just a.
He has a nice wife, that other.
Maybe she can do it, but I don't know about Larry doing it.
Oh boy.
Oh boy, sorry Larry.
Boy, what faith you have, I tell you.
See, I had faith in our purchasing agent to get it done, but they didn't, so.
Well, I do. She does an excellent job.
Yeah, she does an excellent job.
Apparently not. You gotta get consultant.
I remember when we put in these new sidewalks, since we were talking about the, they brought in these urban architects from god knows where. They designed this and we're gonna narrow the streets because it is traffic calming. It slows the traffic down, because if you go too fast, you're gonna bounce off the cars. So, nobody liked that idea, but they didn't, they didn't ask the business owners or the building owners or. So then we got it all done and they're sitting out there and we're having ribbon cutting. And I said, where's the bus stops? And these architects, nobody told us we had bus stops. I said, what the hell do you think these big green things going up and down High Street, you know, are, you know, that say Jefferson say transit on them? So we had no bus stops. So the bus is going west, going part, you know.
I didn't know that.
Well, if a bus and a.
I didn't see that article in the paper till just now.
Oh, from Ed?
One of them's not gonna. One of them's not gonna make.
My buddy. Yeah.
But I love our consultants there. They had to be from Portland, Oregon or something.
Donny has to go.
Let's go, go ahead. There he is.
I'm one minute late.
Well, Donny has to, he came in early for us and.
Nobody told me that.
Well, no, I mean early as.
If we would've brought, if we would've brought lunch, come on.
Yeah, I stayed all the time.
I wouldn't have done that. That's kind of what you had last time. The only thing, whoa, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Two things that's hitting, I guess, hit on me.
Wait till you get them handed out, Donny.
Got that one. Don't have your organizational chart.
You don't have that?
Nope. There you go.
What happened? Your email broke? We got all these papers again. Papers, papers, papers. Cutting paper out of the budget next year.
Take paper out of the budget?
Yeah, I was, Thurl sent a team to Ferguson Sunday. That was supposed to be their eight days. They've sent them back already.
The only thing online on the budget is I have part-time help. I had, I think should've been there thirty thousand five hundred for Richard, is what comes out to be for his twenty-nine hours. If you do hire the new one, it's at twenty-four hours a week, and that's at twenty dollars an hour. I think that comes up to twenty-four thousand five hundred. And I had twelve thousand, ten to twelve thousand dollars in for our part-time help. That's Albert, Reggie and them coming in to help us when guys take vacations, and we have extra trials and stuff. So I don't know if that was completely covered in the last one. And the part-time, I think she had sixty thousand in it, it should've been a little bit higher than that.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, ten to twelve for the regular part-time and then how much was you?
Richard was thirty thousand five hundred and the other one's twenty-four thousand five hundred. If they hire the new one, if they wanna hire another one to do shackles. And we'll have to enter a contract with BE to do the shackles if you wanna do it. Had to be a lower price.
Thought we were already doing the shackles.
We are, but they're, we're buying it through Butch, you get it, renting it through Butch. I gave her some bills today and it's like ten bucks a day, so we can do it for like three dollars a day. The cheaper.
Can we see some policies and procedures on how you're gonna do that?
If we do it, yes.
If we could outline all that, that would be helpful.
Are we billing them for?
Uh, no, right now, we're paying the ones that sell right now.
And I understand that it does save us money not having them in the jail, but I was just thinking we need to try to recoup.
We can do, we can do that if you wanna do that, that's how you wanna set it up.
We can talk about that some other time too, I just.
Well, and I think that's part of the policies and procedures we've got to know.
And we stuck fifteen thousand dollars in for the shacking program to do it. That's like Richard's stuff to shackle people now. To be out on it, beat them around, one through a distance in about a hundred and ten days, got it down. We still got two on it. The boys in high school right now are trying to get him into the military. So if he gets in the military, it's, hell, it's out to his back. One or two shackles.
We'll make that part of it, get through boot camp, that'd be the best. Best thing going for him.
And then.
With the shackle on you.
Trying to do something where he doesn't.
Learn to do the duck.
Record on him, get him in. And the other one's Holly's pay increase. Holly freeze it by fifteen hundred to two thousand a year if I could, figure it out for the rest of people. She is taking on more to help with the program and doing stuff. Other than that, that's all I've got. I did, we do, John and I have been talking to a female, this other job comes through. She's got eighteen years experience in probation parole. She used to write their SARs. She quit working because she has three kids and it's costing more to have a babysit, so she said they'll work around it. And it might be something we can do, and that's what I'm looking at now. She ran her, helped run her shacking program out of probation parole.
Did you get us a new job description for Holly, or for that position?
No, I didn't add that to it.
I think that's kind of what we've been asking everybody to do when they're requesting the raise, and what additional duties or whatever. I know you emailed us something.
Yeah, the additional duties will be just picking up Richard after helping Richard with his program. He's still having some health issues and he hasn't been operating on them yet. I got a fund that's gonna have him pretty quick.
Oh, this is what you emailed us?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what it was. I was out of red ink, I can't do anything to you, sorry.
Here, you can borrow mine. You're not a commissioner yet.
I don't have anything else. I'm good. Sam?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Well, thanks for last time working with me.
Yeah.
You look good. I'm not gonna get hurt. See you guys later.
Happy trails, you're the one who needs some good luck. You gotta keep dealing with these two guys.
Are we on Wednesday yet? What time is it? Thursday?
Thursday, it's the next.
What time is it?
Nine, we'll start at nine.
Will it be later? Because I have A's.
What are we doing?
There's kind of a, I don't remember, Donny, what were we talking about, what's on the?
It's that thing with RFP with Scott and all the things I wanted to, we got A's, we really haven't done by nine thirty. Can you give me thirty minutes, thirty-five minutes?
Oh good, that's not on the agenda.
I, are we talking about what direction he's going or something, or is that what?
I just got an email sent to me today about it.
Okay, I don't know, I'm sorry. I haven't talked to Jennifer yet.
Thank you guys.
Okay, see you Don. Okay, did y'all hear that? Donna Ellis knocked the bell maker, she's sick.
Well, you have my budget. Normally I don't have any complaints about it or anything, and I don't again this year. I just had a few things that, that I may want some change in class or categories. Possibly try to pay yet this year, if I have funds left at the end of the year, some expenses that I know that are due right on the first of next year. That I've already been billed for on my bond. The only thing I didn't see in here, Kristen, the income off of the professional services that we get reimbursed, is that just in with the collective's fees? The income part of it?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Several of my items are, you know, we have the outgoing expense for the, for the delinquent tax sale, and then we have income to come in to offset that. And that would be the public notices. The professional services, those two in particular, that cover the advertising costs. The one good thing with DevNet, our new system, is we collect that fee for every year they're delinquent, not just for the most current year. Where in our old system, we were only collecting for the year we had it up for sale. So if a property didn't sell for three years, or, or we were only collecting one year's cost, but now we collect all three years of those costs.
So I'm sorry, so the bond is okay, that it's out? I'm not understanding, was that, is that an every year bond, or is that every?
No, it's every four years.
Oh, okay.
We were billed for it early. We actually have two bonds. We have one for the employees and then one on me. I, I pay the one for the employees out of my tax maintenance fund. And it's about the same cost as the one for me.
That's for sure, sure.
And I know there's some changes going on between the school fund and the treasurer's office, you doing that, does that change that bond? Because I know the school fund required a bigger bond for the treasurer, does that need to go to him now, or what do you think we need to do?
Pretty sure his bond is large enough at the moment because he runs the, the whole amount through his budget initially. It was just cutting out the middleman in the school fund. He already collects for the school fund.
Sure.
It's just the fact that now it's going to also discharge.
Well, I know the big bond that the treasurer's been paying, close to seventeen, two thousand dollars, was mainly because of that school fund, so hopefully, they require it.
Well, I, I think he was misreading the statutes, because when it talked about the treasurer, it was talking about the school board treasurer, not the county treasurer.
And that's fine, well maybe that doesn't even affect them, if they're talking about that.
I don't know what size his bond is, but. Mine's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's. I don't, I don't think his is that big.
So any changes, Larry?
No, sir. Thank you all for your support.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Thanks, Larry. It's been a pleasure.
It has.
I'm gonna get some of those up there.
Oh. Yeah, but I'll stand for you.
Well, there aren't many people that can stand for me.
Poor Donny, he's our whipping kid today, ain't he? Well, Larry, you came in in a tough environment, a lot of problems down there, you've done a heck of a good job. It really has been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
I could say that about lots of other people, but I can actually mean it when I say it.
Leo coming, so, I told John Riley to come, so. I just think the sheriff might take a little bit longer, but so we'll see. If we can get those done before one thirty.
No, really?
Sorry. Gotta give me a check in.
You're welcome. Eric took care of that for you.
Sam, I look forward to working with you.
I, I look forward to working with you, Larry. I had a good time with you though.
All this niceness is making me sick.
Can I give you that back?
Especially at budget time.
Showing of external acceptance and, you know, while internally beating each other up. Oh, Lord. No, it is kind of fun to come up here and be a little relaxed, and not everybody on pins and needles. Remember we're normally on pins and needles. Looks really loud, do you think I did? I didn't say that, I was just saying there's a little more tension there for a while.
We need to slam some doors and knock some pictures off the wall.
What? Test.
Got my steel boot on.
All you gotta do is check the order, man, you're making a noise with it.
Jeffro? Packers are doing me.
It was a good win yesterday.
They're my hundred dollar team. I had the Seahawks last year and won Super Bowl, so.
Well, I hope you're right.
I got room for them. The fudge packers.
Be a heck of a year for me, even though the Royals didn't win the World Series, it didn't that far, you know.
Yeah, there's only two teams that made it that far, so they can put that feather in their hat.
I'm not sure if Larry's.
I was totally surprised the Cardinals made it to the playoffs.
I'm not sure if Larry's gonna come.
May twenty-third, it's Jeff City Day at Kaufman Stadium, it's the Cardinals playing the Royals. Yeah, we're, 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 yeah, we're skipping, we're, the Royals would not give us a price. Central travel's doing us, so we got the bus and everything.
Cool.
Yeah, May twenty-third, it's a memorial weekend is the only thing, but it's a Saturday game.
Hey, Mark, Dale's here if you're ready to go.
Slipped in quietly.
Yeah, snuck in.
I tried to.
Stuffed, man.
Trying to catch up on all the news that's fit to print.
Did y'all see the?
Pretty short read, man.
Did y'all see they had, they're.
It's really, it's a famous quote.
Is it?
Well, now it is, Mark said.
Oh, and did they? Do I explain that picture?
All right, Dale, you gonna argue about your revenue, or you wanna go straight to Xmas?
Well, let me think about my re, I don't know anything about my revenue. I guess we oughta go the expensive. I talked to Debbie a little bit about, there was just a little, I guess, discrepancy between what I had on my original budget and what was in the published book here. And I think we decided that a lot of the discrepancies came from different departments paying some of their own fees that I had included on my budget, which, you know, I don't mind that, I just wanna be sure we all, you know, everything is, you know, covered, but.
And he's talking about his big one, that equipment maintenance?
Equipment service, service contract.
Yeah, that, that one.
Yeah. See, he's only requesting a hundred and eighty thousand, and I think I had a hundred, almost a hundred and eighty-four six.
But I noticed the internet's twenty-two and you requested eleven, so that's almost a wash in the switch around to the two numbers.
Well, that was.
That's the new contract.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? The twenty-two is?
Yeah, that's what happened.
So that needs to be twenty-two instead of.
So what are all the equipment service contracts? We have a list of those?
Yes.
So I just had them up there.
Are they on our, our drive?
Yeah, under IHS. Under departments.
It takes a second, I gotta move through it. Fifteen departments. Is that budget agreement with elect.
Computer.
Budget work computers.
Yeah, budget work and program.
Budget departments and electric officials. There it is, I see it now. You'd think after two years, I figured.
No, I don't know a bit different.
So is it under income and expenses, or department budget?
Maintenance costs, do you see that? Under his budget, under the Excel?
That's in the Excel.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Commission F drug?
Yes. Under commission.
So what's the total, Debbie?
The total, one eighty-one. That would be coming out of his department. Like he said, some of those other ones that we were looking at were, we put them in the departments they belong, like the assessor's gonna pay for intrinsacore. The image EMS pays for their own image trend.
Image trend, yeah.
And then up above, we had the sheriff's department, and we had those in there, and I think that was what was thrown over.
Yeah, the sheriff's thing.
Can you find this on my computer real quick, so I can follow?
Yeah, the sheriff, actually, they have their overhead paging, that they're the only ones using it in their building, and also they have their phone voice recordings, and they're the only ones using it too.
How much longer are we gonna be on the AS four hundred?
Well, you know, I found out this morning that the assessor is not, I got word that it's gonna be middle of next year before they're moving over to their new system. I just found, and I literally, that is this morning I found that out. I thought they would be about done.
Are you guys moving off of it?
We should be off by hopefully July.
So we're middle of next year.
They just signed up in here almost two years before we did.
Hey, if you need any weights for your doc or AS four hundred.
I tell you what, the problem is, a box is getting so old that we're starting to have failure. I just, I lost a hard drive last week again, so.
We're trying to get out of it.
Yeah.
Keep it together.
That's why we gotta keep the hardware.
Duct tape, you know, whatever you can do.
Well, it's gonna be there. It's getting pretty old. It's like nine years old now, or something, so.
I hate these service contracts, and they particularly galls me to pay for them for software.
But, no, other than that, I don't, I don't think I have any other, that was the only discrepancy between.
Larry didn't pay for that out of his tax maintenance fund?
Well, you guys agreed to do that. I mean, we can go on, we can change that. I know he actually did the purchase of it, and then we agreed to do the maintenance on it from then on out, so.
I don't think I agreed to that. That was before my time.
And that may have been approved.
Well, I don't remember when we made the decision, and that was awful.
Well, we didn't.
Between that and intrinsacore.
Yeah, that's the one that's an issue.
Hope we have that for luck. So.
So his, DevNet's is twenty-five thousand a year, and intrinsacore is fifty thousand a year.
Fifty, yeah, but the other thing is that we don't actually own that, that's almost, you're, you're paying a, yeah, you're subscribing yearly to that. So it's not a long-term anything, so I guess, at any point, you can just turn it off, I don't, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, that was the only way they sold it to us, so.
So that's both a subscription and a maintenance.
All right, so that's a big part of the. You have any others?
No.
You said this, we pay the assessors intrinsacore out of the assessment fund?
Yes. And we, the sheriff pays for his, if they have their own fund, they pay their own. And we could talk about capital if you want. Dale, usually we got thirty to fifty thousand in capital besides the software that we're purchasing that we already have encumbered. Dale's got a worksheet there, if you guys are interested.
And our, and the big.
Where's that at?
Under new requests, same place.
Say on the, on the Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
I'm gonna move down here, sorry.
And, and the biggest thing you're gonna notice are the Exchange CALs and the Windows Server CALs, and what those are. We're getting new versions, and Microsoft, once you go to a new version, your old licenses don't cover it, doesn't cover it, so. We've gotta get, all of our servers are gonna be at least two thousand and twelve, so we need to get everybody CALs so they can legally use it. And Exchange, we're planning, we do plan on putting a new Exchange email server in next year, and it will also be in newer versions, so we need the CALs for everybody on that. And right now, we are, we have four hundred and twenty-five license for Exchange, and we're running right at four hundred and ten to four hundred and fifteen people on it all the time, or mailboxes. So that's, I'm not saying, I didn't let you guys know if we're expanding a lot, but I, you know, that's, should be a workable number.
The only thing, I haven't had a chance to talk to the, but with the new system, and if we use it to its capacity, we're gonna need emails for all county employees, or otherwise we will take in their personal email address. And they're, not all county employees have an email right now.
Okay, who doesn't?
I'm thinking the guys at Public Works, I'm thinking.
EMS?
I think.
EMS pretty well has them, I think.
And we're talking part-timers. I don't know if you have any part-timers across the county.
Sheriff has got a lot.
But I think we'll be adding some.
I think EMS, all their people, whether they're part-time or. I think EMS, all their people, whether they're part-time or not have it. Now, Public Works, we, no.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to, well, we'll have to bump that number up.
And I think every other, juvenile, do you have all of them? So.
Juvenile, we got probably Sharon and Michael or somebody, or maybe just Sharon.
Be it a personal address or what.
Well, we'll have to.
State email addresses is what juvenile uses.
State, for all their people.
Well, Sharon, Sharon and somebody's got, they do have some.
Sharon and Michael.
Okay, so we'll just keep that.
Okay, well, we'll, they will have to be an adjustment on the four twenty-five, then, that'll have to go up. Cause for, like I said, we're right now, we've got four hundred and ten, give or take.
You guys have any questions over the capital for Dale, or is his list there?
So I'm just a little confused, I mean, what, if email addresses go up, that means we have to have more certificates?
There's, you have a, it's a, um, a CAL is a client access license. And that means anybody that has a mailbox gets a license, or has to have a license for legality.
And why does everybody have to have an email address?
That's what you're saying.
Or to receive their paychecks coming up to get access to the website that we're gonna set up through this new software. So they, we won't be handing out stubs anymore, they can go out there and get their own, they can change their address out there, they can do all kinds of things out there that will come to us. And then we actually have to do the changes within the system.
Right now, it's not mandatory that it be a county email address, but we were, we were talking within that maybe it would be better if it was a county email address instead of a personal one, but.
Security-wise, I didn't know that affected.
We haven't talked to Dale about whether or not there's any issues with it being a personal email versus a county email.
If there's an issue with it, then let them have a personal one, not.
Yeah, I'd say a lot of people would rather probably not have two, but.
Well, most people actually have the, the county on their phone anyway. I mean, just bet everybody has a phone and everybody gets their county email on their phone.
So you're talking about Public Works, you got another thirty or forty people.
Yeah, it's, that's a big, that's a big thing that we do not have right now, yeah.
I don't know, if there's not an issue with that, then just put their personal one on there and leave, let them decide.
And I can see some of the people out there that aren't two computers, that people out here use my wife's email or.
Yeah.
Which you can't do.
Yeah, I'm not gonna get into.
That's.
It does actually present a potential problem.
So that's where we're like, should we require them to add?
There we go. Spouses, we get in trouble. All right, well, before we go there.
Yeah, I'm gonna be quiet.
I mean, I, I guess I.
I'm not, Jake's not coming.
I'm gonna throw this out there, but I mean, wouldn't there be some way that they could just have a login or something, but, I mean, without, cause I can see a lot of those guys out there just getting on a computer out there and just seeing what their stuff is.
Set up as a user base, so they would have to have their own user ID, their own, I can see that happening, but it's still gonna be, I don't know, we'll have to wait till we get into it.
Yeah, we haven't really sat down and got the, both of us.
I just struggle to see why we have to pay for an email address, cause you can get them for free anywhere else. Gmail, AOL, Yahoo.
If we're transferring.
Cause we don't put ours on Gmail, AOL, Yahoo.
I mean, that's totally up to you guys, it's just a number to me, so I just wanna be legit, that's all, that's my only concern on this, I mean, it's all mainly on paper, I mean, you don't really go in and say anything that's, says, like, I got four hundred and fifty. But if they come and decide to knock on your door and say, well, how many licenses you own, they'll, they'll check their records and if you've only got fifteen, they might have a problem, you know, or something. But, uh, the rest of these things are all actual departmental requests, uh, and normally we would buy these fu- or buy it out of the, our funds instead of, uh, a departmental fund. So, uh, they're just, we're, we're just about done with the XP machines. I don't think there's anybody left except for two over in the assessor's office, or three, well, there's a couple at the front desk, and it doesn't happen, but we've just about got them all taken care of. So that's the biggest thing, since it's been out of service.
How much more stuff will you need? Is this taking into account the new system and everything too?
No, uh, client-wise, I mean, I think the new machines will handle, so, I mean, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, but I don't know uh, the entirety of how it's gonna be rolled out, I mean, for individual users, I mean, if it has to be suddenly that everybody's gotta have their own machine, then we're talking about, I don't, I don't know that. Right now, we have not.
We're probably adding some scanners, some monitors, some of that, but we did budget a little bit of that.
In the actual software purchase, we had included some equipment?
Yeah, we are not adding any additional machines on this budget for the new financial system, other than what's already been kind of talked about.
Only maybe some training demo stations that we can have set up, and looking to the future, if we do go more electronic, if I can have some stations set up so we can do new employee enrollment type things, that kinda stuff, if that software brings that, that would be great, yeah, there might be some purchases like that. But some of these purchases also, we can, we can put out to these funds, the assessment fund, the ambulance, you know, um, some of these are all in G I, in general revenue, so we could, but, so it would free up a little money there.
And overall, I don't have a huge problem with, uh, computers, monitors, you know, when we start getting into scanners and printers and stuff, I mean, it just seems like we got way too many.
Copiers versus scanners?
Well, it just seems like everybody wants their own printer at their own station or whatnot, and so, you know, I, I understand that certain people probably need a printer there, and I think you need a printer there, but, you know, we got these great big copier, scanners, printers. I think we need to utilize those more and, and quit buying these HP all-in-ones that last two years and then the year they're done, so.
Actually, I don't know that I buy all-in-ones. My, mine are primarily just like the white laser printers. I mean, dude, that's not totally, obviously, we buy a couple of colors, but most people don't buy colored laser printers, but. The, the deal with the cheaper, yeah, the cheaper things, the all-in-ones I hate because you always lose one part, then you end up with, everything else works and you still have to go buy another machine, so it doesn't really bear.
Hate the maintenance contracts on anything that's less than five thousand dollars probably. I mean, if we have a copier or a printer or anything, we're paying maintenance agreements on something that's less than five thousand dollars, we're just shooting ourselves.
No, I'd say the only maintenance agreements we're paying anymore is copying machine and stuff.
Yeah, well, we always have three-year maintenance on all the stuff we get through WWT.
That comes with it, yeah.
It comes with it, we don't pay extra for it. I'm talking about.
Yeah, we have.
Annual maintenance fees, I'm looking at a whole bunch of them for.
Well.
Look at them all.
I mean, it's just, I mean, it just really kinda floors me, I mean, here we are, everything's paperless, but yeah, we're buying printers and copiers like crazy, and so. Anyway, we aren't paperless, we're far from.
Oh, yeah, I think we're getting more and.
I think we're printing more stuff.
Oh, yeah. Okay, you got any other questions for Dale? Sam?
Nope.
Thanks, Dale. Okay.
I did ask Riley to come for the visit, it was going to John, do you want him to come back and do the sheriff that, cause it's right on time for the sheriff, so.
John's just take a minute, won't he?
John, do you have a lot of discussion?
No.
All right.
If sheriffs don't mind. I'd like to see the sheriff.
Hope he stepped out, it's a blue.
Let's go, John.
Um.
You gotta stall for him.
Everything looks pretty good, uh, you know, jury's.
You were out of room, we called.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, we did, I said sheriff's not in room.
Said sheriff's not here.
What changes, John?
All right, go ahead, John, seventy-eight.
We're, we're, um, actually pretty good, you know, jury scripts, uh, cramp you, so, uh, but it, it, you know, if everything runs quartering plan, everything's fine there. My only concern would be the meeting, travel and dues. I got about, I think, pretty close to sixty-five hundred just to, with the judges and court reporters on their licensing and, and dues. Other than that, it's, and there ain't any, there isn't any real trips built into that except for, uh, judges' college, but, um, that's kinda more their CP than anything else, but.
So sixty-five hundred is what you got this year?
Well, I had, I, I put in seventy-five hundred and, uh, it got reduced to six thousand, but, um.
What is that?
Pretty big transfer of fifteen hundred, so he's at seventy-two right now, uh, we did do six, he moved over.
Where are all the costs? I mean, they're becoming big slugs, like twenty-four, fifty-five.
I had, um, I had the, uh, the eight oh two ninety-four. They were traveled for training, we don't have to do that again, that was, uh.
Where'd they go?
They went to California.
Well, that's nice.
She'd have costed two hundred and forty dollars for travel, I mean, for getting them from the airport back to the, from the hotel, but, uh.
Less than five thousand in thirteen.
Yeah, that's just a big job.
Yeah, the, you know, I was ninety-five on the annualized, but like I said, that, I had to send two clerks out to, uh, uh, California. Pat thought I could, uh, take it out of, uh, interest or something, but statutorily, I couldn't do that, so I had to scramble. But we're not gonna do that again this year, so we're, uh, quite a bit lower than what I actually spent this last year.
Sixty-five hundred, get it then, or?
I'd feel a little more safer with sixty-five hundred, just to get everybody licensed and taken care of.
Anything else?
You need to make sure you budget that grant, either get a new grant for the drug.
Call you to get a new grant for drug court enhancement?
I think we have a quarter or coming down.
We do, so you just need to make sure you carry forward whatever's left at the end of the year.
Good program.
All right. Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
There you go. We weren't gonna miss the next shot.
Pretty much right on time.
All right.
Yeah, usually we're way ahead. Oh, wait a second, we've gotten through almost the whole day already.
And we should be out of here within ten minutes.
Good.
Would you agree to all of it?
Well, no, no, I see that was because you're gonna ask for nothing, and we were all gonna agree.
Your clock has started.
Oh, it's started, okay, so you're good to go, you're good to go, you're good to go?
No, 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 okay.
All right.
You're good, see you next year.
Almost good with that. I think you have a vote in this.
Not right now.
Uh, I'm Debbie. Do you like to have a coffee?
With the, uh, proposal put forth by, uh, the incoming auditor, as well as the existing auditor, we, uh, for everything except caper projects and one small addendum, two small addendums, we agree with it and support it. Two addendums, one of them is, uh, is, there's another maintenance contract that needs to be added to it, Betsy can explain that. And you know that we're in the process of doing some of the same things that Public Works did with salary, and we'll, we'll have all of that to you before decisions have to be made. And the last one is, uh, has to do with capital improvement, and I'd ask, first of all, I'd have, i- if you wanna know what, how much the, the addendum is, Betsy can share with you on the maintenance contract and what it is.
We are, we have trackers that our investigators use, and we have to do their SIM card part of the tracker, so we need to increase our equipment service contract to one hundred and seven thousand.
From?
From the one oh three eight ninety-eight.
Why do we have all these annual maintenance fee contracts?
Well, that's.
Printers, copiers, printer scanner. Why are we having to pay for all those?
Dale could probably explain to you better why IT charges all these maintenance contracts, because it's, it's IT services for the most part.
These are out of your.
I, I agree, no, it's not, it's not his stuff.
Well, so the ones I'm, I'm not asking about like Huber, like Interpol, I understand that, I mean, we don't like the, we don't like the software stuff, but I know we're stuck with it, that's. But we've got like a K O P I jail clerk, L D two twenty S P F, that's a printer.
Yes.
We have K O P I M P five thousand two S P, that's a printer, we have a K O P I lanyard, L D one fifty S P, that's a printer. We have an image tech, that's a printer, I think, cause it says possible increase for copies made, I guess that's maybe a copy. We have a printer scanner, I mean, why are we paying all those maintenance?
Well, it's cheaper than not having the contract and having them come out outside of it and do the repairs, because they do break down.
It'd be cheaper just to ride without them and then if we need to buy new ones?
Well, it.
We just had that discussion two minutes ago, that's why.
And, and, and I don't know that I can, I can answer that, it depend on the, on the year, one year it might be and another year it may not be. But I, I know that we have people working on them, the different ones, a lot. We do a huge volume of paper, I wish we could go paperless, it's not there. Yeah, and it would help if everybody could interface, uh, right now, we can't interface with the, with the courts, we can't interface with prosecutor's office, and that's a huge volume of our paperwork. Wish we could, should be able to, sheriffs have pushed for it for the last several years, but that means that cartel needs to give access, and it means OSK needs to give access. And neither one of them are very good at giving access.
You think we could set another meeting to talk about equipment services contracts?
Yeah, I think we've told all the departments we want that running list, and I.
Cause I'm looking at, I just picked one of them, I picked the M P five thousand two S P.
I couldn't even tell you what that is.
That is a Rico officio multi-function copier.
Is that the one in Civil?
I think so. Buy it for new for six thousand dollars. We're paying sixteen hundred and fifty a year in maintenance fees.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure which one that is.
Three and a half years, you paid for a new.
And, and maybe without it.
It's a big pretty one, I mean, it's got all sorts of bells and whistles on it.
It may be the one, I don't know. It's not like we.
There's a picture of it.
It's a new one in Civil.
Yeah.
In year, not a wonderful thing.
Yeah.
We've already had them.
Yeah.
At least five times, if you haven't worked on that. Since we got it.
We go through.
I don't know if it's gonna be worth our money.
When did you get it?
That was this year.
We go through at least four reams of paper a day, I think, in that copier.
So that's your highest.
That's in Civil.
You know, and, and understand, I mean, you all.
We're not saying that some of these aren't worthwhile, I mean, don't get us wrong, but, you know, I mean, it's.
And if you're not there with it, and I, and I, thanks for showing me the picture, cause I, I know that's a Rico, cause I've got an app on for it, but, uh.
I think it's just worthwhile, and we, we have copiers from K O P I, we have things from Datacon, we have things from, uh, G F I and, and, and other places too. I think we've talked about this before, trying to bring everything under, edit it all together.
And, and I'm on board with that.
Have one person that does, that comes in and does service and can service them all.
Well, what we need to do is, is like moving forward, if we can have Jennifer work up that, so we've got this stuff on dead out there already, so when it comes time to purchase, we do it, that's where we go.
And we have left that out there, and we have put it, and we have got proposals back, the one, me and Jennifer have talked back and forth about is we're kinda creating a monopoly for that vendor, and then we kinda back off of that, because I understand each department having their own, their own and having all of them the same, as far as, you know, you don't stay with, um, whatever, Rico, all the machines in that department.
They're not, they're, you got a lanyard.
That's what I'm saying, if we wanna go back.
Which apparently is one of those companies that refuses to put any information about price out, so they can keep it internal to their.
On those bigger ones, we bid out, but some of that stuff we get off state bid, and it could be Rico that time, it could be.
They're all coming through K O P I.
No, sir, we haven't got all of ours through K O P I.
K O P I, K O P I, the, the big ones that are identified by a printer, I mean, a specific type of printer, are all K O P I.
And in all honesty, I, I'm okay, if you all wanna do the bid, I, I'm one, I think county-wide, it would be fine to be on that. And if it creates monopoly, that'll create, that'll, that'll force somebody to do a better job on their bid next time around. And you said, if you do it for one year, if you do it for two years, if you do it for three years, the next time around, they're gonna know, they're gonna have to be competitive.
But then these machines last longer with that, so then you've got, you're gonna have another hodgepodge if you get.
But you can, they will, they will buy out any agreements that you have or whatever, I mean, there's, there's ways around that, so.
Some can, and some can't.
Yeah, some of it's proprietary.
Yes.
But at the same time, you know, I, I realize that some of these are on state contract, but what's not on the state contract is the service agreement. And so, you know, that's, that's something that we really need to look at, I mean, so, yeah, it's a great deal, it's on state contract, and it's real cheap, and then they come around and get you on the back end, and they hammer you on the service agreement, so it wasn't really that great of a deal.
Well, we're agreeing with you that if you all wanna do that, we're happy to.
I just think it's worth looking.
I mean, we've worked on the, across the county side, um, we've pretty much, on printers and copiers, tried to get rid of the service agreements to the extent possible.
Well, because, we're, we're happy to be included in the program as long as.
Copy machines are really the only thing that's left.
Right.
I think we need to pay somebody to go to school and learn how to do that.
Well, that would work great if you get one kind of.
Maybe we need to pay somebody to go to school and learn how to work on copiers and hire them.
Great camp.
It was just a question I had, so, I'm sorry, I've detracted away from the, I just saw those maintenance fees.
Yeah.
We've been talking about them lately.
Yeah, you're not the first one we picked on.
Oh, no, I, I've been here for you, picked on other people and stuff like that, it's fine.
No, today.
And in all honesty, I don't feel picked on, it's, 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 it's become a huge cost of doing business. The more efficient we can be, the better off we are.
I agree, yep.
Okay.
So you're not getting kickback from us on it?
You wanna talk about, uh, capital improvements?
John?
Um, there was a, we sent you a, a letter, and it's got, at the top of the letter, it has vehicle replacement costs, that's what I'm talking about. Uh, remember, when I'm doing this, we talked about, this was a, we came up with this for three. Remember, when I'm doing this, we talked about, this was a, we came up with this three, three and a half months ago, so. And there's been some changes, and I'll go through that in a second. Vehicle replacement costs. We came to you last year, the plan I had was two hundred and forty thousand a year, we'd buy eight cars. And then, the next year, we would get to a point that we were turning in these cars when they're newer, when they have less mileage, therefore getting more back on. And with the SUVs in particular, what I, what I picked on, was that if we are turning in these SUVs, with less than a hundred thousand miles on them, we should be getting at least ten grand a pop for them whenever they go to auction. That would bring eighty thousand dollars back, which would then, would make our cost only a, a small, a small amount. But last year, we also came up with, with the deal with the eight pickups. And that helped us out quite a bit, because we were able to get some of the older stuff out of the way by buying those eight, plus the six that were already slated to be replaced, so we replaced a bunch of vehicles this last year. Seeing that you gave us a, I think I wanna say it was a hundred and ninety-three thousand, or it's close to two hundred thousand you gave us on top of the eight vehicles. With that, we still have sixty thousand dollars left over. So we, we, in that new car account, it's still sixty thousand dollars, and I'll talk to you about that in just a second. Tablet computers, you know Microsoft stopped working with the X P products, all of our, all of the Toughbooks that we had were X P. Dale is going back through and changing those out to Windows Seven, slowly but surely. And that's working out pretty good, but some of these, and Dale's one that brought it up, some of these laptops are coming up on five years old, and it, pretty soon it's not gonna be worth the cost it's gonna take to upkeep. So we're looking at trying to replace those tablets with other tablets.
Debbie, where is this at? I've tried every damn thing on this, I'm sorry.
As a moment of levity on the vehicles, I was thinking, while Debbie's doing that, I was thinking that perhaps we could try a Mini Cooper for John. Might have to take out the driver's seat, have him sit in the back.
I don't know, what about one of those Nissan Leafs?
You know, we talked about this last year, what, funny then, smart car now?
Smart car? That would probably help you, John, if you got a smart car.
I appreciate you all helping.
We put some pedals in it, too.
Gee, thanks.
I'll tell you what, we'll spring, we'll spring for the double hamster model.
Thanks, Debbie.
In about ten more years, I'll have your system figured out.
Well, we're gonna change it next year, so not to worry.
You can count that as goods. I'm gonna turn this off for one second. All right.
If you look at the tablet computers, then we're looking at about fifteen hundred dollars each, and then there's gonna be the cost of Microsoft licensing, but not on every one of them. Because some of the licenses we have now will transfer over, so we just won't know that until we do it. The next one's desktop computers, we still, and I think it's less than twelve now, I think it's down to ten. We have ten desktop computers that are still X P. We gotta, they're about a thousand dollars to replace them, plus the off software. We don't have to buy screens for us, you don't have to buy keyboards, we already have those, we just need the, the desktop itself. And that way, we just get off state bid. The next two, well, let me just get down to tasers. Tasers, we, we try to buy five a year for replacement. The cost of those are about two thousand dollars each, and they have the cameras on them. So we try to buy five of those every year just for replacement, because the ones that we've had, we've had to replace, we have to replace anywhere between three and five a year, because they're just not fixable. Now, the body cameras and vehicle cameras, whenever we, whenever I devised this up, vehicle cameras, we were going by three thousand dollars. I pulled up a couple of quotes, and that's what I went with, plus the ones that we, we have right now. That's way low, it, it's actually, they run about forty-five hundred dollars a piece. And then the body cameras run about eight hundred dollars each. So you can see down on the bottom, I added all these up. The tat, the body cameras are eight hundred, and the dash cams are forty-five hundred. And if, if you look at it, there, there's a deal going on right now, but we just had someone come in. We really haven't been able to talk seriously with vendors, because I have no money, because I don't know what we can get, what we can't get. Right now, there's a, there's a couple companies out there that are offering a, a package deal that you can get. You pay forty-five hundred dollars for the dash cam, and for two hundred dollars, you get a Cobra body mic that actually attaches to your Upland. And it, it's a, it's a pretty good deal, because you get both for a lot less than what you would get if you have to add them together. The problem with buying this stuff is, is the data. We have to be able to store the data in a manner that it's evidence, because it's, you can't, so it can't be altered in any way, it can't be on the regular server, so we have to be careful of how we do the data. Some of these come with a back system on them that does the, that does the automatic downloads, or does a download in which when you go in and, and put the S D card in, it downloads and can, and hosts it for you. You can get on there actually out on the car, and hit a button, and input a D W I, and then put a case number. So that way, whenever you get back in, if you need a case number, you're just punching that number, and it brings a video up. If you don't do it that way, then you have to bring it in, and then individually find those segments, cut and paste, pretty much, is how you'd have to do it.
Yeah, and I don't like that, because that means you get to manipulate data, and that's not a good way to do business.
So, there's, the reason why I'm bringing this up is, even though it.
How much, how much data do you need? I mean, see, you've got two terabytes servers, that's sufficient.
I put two terabytes on there, but again, it, it's to start us out with, and, and again, it just depends on how much data we end up holding and how it's held, it depends on the unit you get, on how they store. And, and so, that's why some of these numbers are pretty fluid, because I really just can't answer them for you. The company that just came talked to us, I had two extra, there's one local, and there's one that came in. Both of those have different figures in which we could come up with, they give us some good data coverage and stuff like that, but it's, it's a service maintenance contract deal, which I don't wanna talk about right now. So, what we can do, since we still have the sixty thousand dollars in that new car account, if you guys would authorize it, we can take that and add that to our, our capital improvement for this year. So it takes away, because right now, we're at.
It's coming here for next year.
For next year, I'm sorry. It's three hundred and, right now, if you count everything up, including cars, we're asking for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in capital improvements. If we include the sixty thousand that we still have in that account, then that drops it down to three fifteen.
It's still three seventy-five.
Right.
Well, either way. It just stays in your balance, so.
But it's, I mean.
But that's the amount that you'd end up spending. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna comment on these cameras, we think that we're looking at a, a good method of doing it. There are some people that are pushing that the moment you're on duty, your camera's on. And to manage eight to ten hours of data, day in and day out, is, it's horrific. Horrific, and I don't see how we can do that.
The, the, what we could do, if you wanted to, this sixty thousand we have in our account now, hopefully, at, at, at five thousand dollars each, right, if, if the cameras are five thousand for the dash cams, we could buy twelve of those with the money from this year. Next year, I've asked for two hundred thousand a year for cars. Part of that two hundred thousand, we'd be buying a camera for that vehicle. So that means the six vehicles that we buy in two thousand and fifteen, we would buy with the camera system. So right now, we're at eighteen vehicles. And we really need to get to twenty-seven, because twenty-seven is what we have in patrol division. And that's what we're trying to outfit, actually, it's twenty, twenty-six. Twenty-six is where we're at in, in patrol division. The detectives, I wouldn't, I, I don't know if we really need to put dash cams in their vehicles, but I definitely want them to have body cams. So there's, we have a plan on trying to do it. I, I can't give you firm numbers, because I don't know what numbers I have. So it's hard for me to go to a vendor and say, how much are they? And the first thing they ask is, well, how many you wanna bid? And I say, well, I don't know, because I don't know how much money I can have yet. Now, if you wanna hold this separate, let us go through a process, test and evaluation, which we're doing one right now, and, and come back to you with this information, and let you make the decision on what we're doing. I'm, I'm happy with that.
I'm just curious, how do your vehicle cameras, do they run all the time?
Yes, but, well, they can activate off the, they activate off the light switch. Or you can hit a button, and it goes five seconds prior to, well, depending on the unit, sometimes five seconds, sometimes twenty.
But it backdates it and holds that from five seconds before. So you're only holding the data from right before to, five seconds before the time you activate. Because if you start looking at the entirety of data, it.
I mean, the reason I ask that is because, you know, we're talking about body cameras, so it's, it's a camera that's on the person, so. It just, I mean, I don't know what a vehicle, how much better a vehicle camera takes video out in front as, you know, I don't know where those body cameras go, but it seemed to me like if they were in a place where they were looking, where the officer was looking, that one would serve both functions, but it doesn't.
Well, the, the problem with that is, is that you'd have to turn the body camera on whenever you get ready to chase somebody, whenever you're getting out of the car, so it's a part of memory, so you'd have to make sure you turn it on. And I'm gonna tell you, if it's a, if it's a pursuit, or if you come up on something, once you, first you turn your lights on, which whichever cop does, it automatically starts that, that video. And then if you end up bailing out and chasing somebody, well, then the car video is no longer any good. But this one is, as long as you remember to turn it on.
And if it's, and if it's a choice of blocking a punch, pulling a taser, or, or, or getting hit in the face while you're turning your camera on, you're gonna try to avoid getting hit in the face, but.
And the other thing it allows us to do with the dash cams, because sometimes you're out on an accident, you may be out there for two hours. Well, if you don't think about it, you flip your lights on, your camera's rolling for those two hours, so.
What's a shift, how long's a shift, eight hours?
Ten.
Ten hours.
Ten hours.
So, you'd wanna be able to get on there and say, okay, that was just us sitting on the side of the road, you know, waiting for, it could be a dead animal, and they're waiting for conservation to show up, or, or something, and we really don't need to store that. And where that's beneficial is, with the back program, is as soon as an incident happens, the officer gets back into his car, and can punch in the case number, so we automatically know this one has to be saved.
John, if you don't mind, I'm not getting to your ones, three seventy-five, can you tell me what I'm missing up here?
Yeah, it's the two hundred thousand for the cars, and then for the dash cams down there, I changed the number to forty-five hundred instead of three thousand. You're way over. Maybe I calculated wrong.
Do you still have seventeen in there?
Yeah.
Three ninety-one, before we added sixty.
I must've added more than.
Well, I didn't wanna go there. Maybe we could just.
No, it's probably me, and I'm okay with that.
If I could find a ten terabyte drive for eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
That's correct, now here's a, here's a.
It's a ten terabyte, it's not a one terabyte.
Right, and we're using that right now for video for like surveillance. Now, the problem there, or the issue there is, we know it's surveillance, so that whole block's going in there. If you have the, if you.
No, no, I'm just saying, I mean, you could get a ten terabyte drive for eight hundred dollars, why would you buy a one terabyte drive for five hundred dollars?
Because three months ago, whenever I, whenever I priced them, that's how much they were.
Because you don't need a ten?
Oh, I'll take a ten.
Well, I was just trying to say, if you run a, if you run a personal camera for the entire shift, you know, you're talking about, give or take, forty-two, forty-four gigabytes of data. That's about what a, what a ten eighty P camera runs.
Okay.
Which means you could get, like, thirty shifts on a one terabyte server. If you have a ten terabyte server, you can get three hundred shifts. Now you can start talking about actually doing that, if, if that's the proposal. Because the problem with, the problem with these, with the cameras are, if you don't run them all the time, the problem is, is when you're not running them, sure as anything's when you get your first complaint.
Right, well, and there's, and there's, and part of the issue nationwide on this is trying to work out when you're gonna turn them off. Because you don't have to record yourself in the bathroom.
Or turn them on, either way.
Well, if it's, if it's leave them on a hundred percent of the time, except when you're going to the bathroom, do you have to do it when you're having lunch, and have private conversation with your partner or someone else? You know, and those things, we have to write in policy if we, if we do this. And I'm not saying that's not the direction, because I think that the push nationally is going to be the full-time camera.
Agreed.
Now, the advantage is, we're one of the few agencies, we've only gone to court once, to the best of my knowledge, on taser. Usually, defense counsel looks at the taser video and goes, what's the best plea agreement we can get? The one that we went to court was on a felony assault and law enforcement, he didn't wanna go to prison, he went to prison. The advantage is, is the camera is a camera.
Yeah.
And just, and, and understand about the three hundred shifts that you talked about, and I, I had not figured any of that out.
No, I just did some math real quick to figure it out.
Yeah, remember, there's, there's gonna be at least, at least two, if not three people on during that shift.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's just three hundred shifts, it doesn't mean that it's three hundred days, it just means three hundred shifts. If there's three people on, then it's, you know.
Yeah, and I, and like briefings, things like that, you're not gonna have a lot.
How are you going to manage that data?
It's, it's got software to do it with, maintenance agreements.
But I mean, I mean, I would, I would think that there'd be a certain amount that you could just dispose of.
Exactly.
Well, it depends, if they're mandating hundred percent coverage, you're gonna break out sections by case numbers.
Who's mandating?
No, if, I'm saying if, and there's, there's a push nationally right now to mandate that if you're not doing something that's allowable to not record, everything else is recorded, your whole shift, stupid. But, heading that direction.
I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, whether it's three hundred shifts, or.
It'll break it.
Whatever, yeah, I mean, we just can't record and record and record and record and record, and just save it for a rainy day.
Well, you're right, I mean, you know.
We do it all the time.
If you're on, if you're on a ten hour shift, and you only have four encounters, then you can delete four hours, say hypothetically, of the ten hours right off the bat, which is what the management system's for.
Or, you know, or every thirty days it recycles, you know, that type of.
Unless there's a case, which case it's.
Which you've pulled it off and saved it separate. It's just like the cameras in, in, in the buildings. They're recording, and depending on the volume coming in, it's how often they recycle. Data storage would have been a good business to get into about ten years ago.
The good news was that we still have sixty thousand dollars on our new, new car cam. So, I, I mean, I didn't hear anybody say good job, absolutely.
Good job.
Thank you, Debbie. Right now, hopefully a month, all of our vehicles last, but I, I see no reason that the vehicles we have now will be okay until this next year.
Anything else?
Revenue side, in the jail, two things.
I mean, the only thing that I'm gonna say is that, you know, for all the technology and everything that we got.
Yeah.
There comes a point where you can't afford to do all that. I mean, I'm not saying that you shouldn't get body cameras, I'm not saying that you shouldn't have in-car cameras, but what I am saying is, there comes a point where we can't afford to store all that data.
Well, and the, the advantage we've got is if it's the state that mandates it, you know, it's an unfunded mandate if they make us do it. If the feds do it, there's things, there's times where we have no options. We, if it breaks us, we, we have no options.
Well, the state can't, can't.
State can't.
They can't make you do stuff that they don't fund.
Right, and the federal government can't make you do anything unless there's a funding stream attached.
Well, we're hopeful for that.
But I'm saying they can't make you do anything. If the federal government says you have to run your cameras twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, you can tell them just where to put that. Now, if they give you a grant, and they say as a term of.
As a grant, you agreed to all these other things.
Then when you take the grant, you probably gotta come to the commission and say, hey, just FYI, we're getting ten thousand dollars this grant, it's gonna cost six hundred thousand dollars in storage.
For what, like the Mustang grant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not part of our budget.
Well, it's kinda in the revenue, so I don't know if I can take that out.
Only the revenue side, we don't know yet, they haven't told us, and, and they apparently haven't closed it down yet, as of yet. So we're not, we just don't know yet. I'm still hoping they're going to choose to revisit. And I, I will tell you.
So nobody signed that agreement?
Oh, some places have. Some places don't have Jill LaHue to look at things. Betsy's got another addendum here.
On the revenue side, in seven oh four, the federal prisoners, we asked for five hundred and thirty thousand, it was reduced by ten thousand. After looking at November's numbers, it'll actually annualize to five hundred and forty-one thousand. So we just asked that it go back to the five thirty.
Kristin says it makes sense.
And it was federal?
Federal prisoners.
Yep. Go ahead.
And then also, in seven oh four, under medical services, we asked for five thousand, it was reduced to three thousand five hundred. But we, with the KEIF system, when they brought the amounts forward, it came forward in a lump sum. So Debbie Carroll has been working very hard on separating that lump sum as to what those fees were. very hard on separating that lump sum as to what those fees were per inmate, and if they had co-pays, she had to figure out who they went to and how much it was. She just finished that, and so we got money in, and so actually, with October's numbers annualized, it came up to eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, so we asked that go increase to ten thousand dollars.
On revenue?
On revenue.
Oh, it's ten, oh, okay. Cause this is twelve oh nine six, vice versa.
You know, if it continues, we'll, we should see.
It's a revenue always better than.
Better love, shoot low on revenue and high on expense, vice versa.
Well, just getting as close as possible, so twelve was pretty close both times.
But they're going to do that quarterly, but it just happened to be that that lump sum through her, that she's been working on splitting out, it was co-pays, and if they broke a wristband, they had to pay for it, and she had to figure out how much of each one, and it's taken her a while. Kudos to her for getting that finished, but she finally got that done, so that's why we're asking for that increase.
And I, and I would point out that one of the indicators of good administrator is the staff that they have that work with them, so I'm gonna give Victor some kudos here, because his staff has really stepped up on a lot of this.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
That's fair.
That's what I thought. Stop thinking.
Yes, sir.
Debbie would love mini cruiser.
She would fit in one.
Our mini Cooper.
Actually, I fit in one, it's amazing.
Get out.
Hey, can't you have to roll out on the ground?
Cut me out.
Can I watch?
Just stand up and step out of.
Just like a lot.
Hey Debbie?
Yeah?
Our big monster spreadsheet, did I read this correctly, is, we may act, we're actually surviving long-term funding?
Um, the one that I actually updated.
Say yes.
I wasn't supposed to talk about that.
Say yes.
Well, I'm looking at it, cause it's part of the, you stuck it in this part of the file folders, it appeared to look at.
Yeah. You're playing around.
You know, you tell us to look at the stuff you put on here, and then when we look at it, you tell us to look at it.
No, it is updated as of the end of, um, November, except for payroll. But I annualize payroll. Okay, so the estimate for two thousand and fourteen, by the time we get done with this year, uh, me and Kristen differ a little bit, but hearing more revenue than I wasn't anticipating we may be, at the four point eight carry forward, I was only at the four point seven.
Right.
You take that over into this year's budget that Kristen already has out there, unless the loan payment and everything that's out there, yes, the top, see that seven million one hundred and seventy-six thousand and oh, that compared to the expense, they do are exactly the same. So that's where we try to get to every year, so there's not no structural problems, that the, the main revenue balances to the main expense.
So the three-letter word that you just used a minute ago, yes?
Yes, for that year, but as you can see in this spreadsheet, I do not carry over any more capital through the rest of the term, I do not carry over any, what I have in there is a no percent increase on sales tax, two percent increase in revenue, and a three percent increase in expenses. So as you can imagine, then that would keep eating away at that carry forward balance through the rest of those years, as you can see that amount.
So it's good news, bad news, Greg, and I can, let me sum it up to you the way I read it.
Okay.
Since she still hasn't gotten to the last year. Uh, when we pay off the bond, the good news is, when we get to those really bad years, we were worried about a couple, last year and the year before, we have sufficient cash reserves, assuming everything holds, based on assumptions to stay completely solid. The bad news is, based on the going-forward projections, we don't ever run an operating surplus again, which means that cash balance, while it will not go down as fast, looks like it will continue to go down.
At some point.
Which is not a good sign.
Well, and, and.
Now, we got a four percent revenue growth this year. Uh, if we could get two or three years of four percent revenue growth, that, that entire discussion would change, provided, big caveat being, can't go out and spend it all.
Right.
I mean, when you put, when you put in large, uh, when you put in large amounts of money for pay raises or things of that type, it does throw the whole equation off.
Unless you pull it from general.
Which isn't gonna happen.
And you can.
Which is why we, which, yeah, that's right, for twenty, thirty-one more, thirty days.
Thirty more days.
Nine hours and forty-two minutes, second half.
And you can see right now, I just went ahead and put in three hundred thousand worth of capital, but it increased, you can see how we go faster back into the hole, because I did not have any capital outlay out there before.
So it's just, you know, the, the issue is, long-term, that spreadsheet, we have to keep an eye on it, because that's, that's the number we always have to keep an eye on, that's the long-term term.
Well, and we certainly looked at reduction in, in Kristen's budget, as opposed to what we initially asked for, but we think we can make that work, and that's the reason. We'll continue to do our best to work with it all the way through. Uh, unforeseen things, can't tell you about.
But you and I aren't gonna be here when, when the really hard stuff comes.
Two years, thirty days.
Nine hours, forty-one minutes, and twenty seconds, lose count.
That's right.
Depending on what Gerald's vision is, putting nine-one-one back in that budget, putting an administrative fee back in that budget, capital.
But you're taking it out of our general revenue monies that were, so we're not supplementing.
Well, we're just not taking out the computer services.
The, the long and short of it is, we're gonna have to keep an eye on that, long-term. We know that, that's always gonna be the issue.
Hey Chris.
Okay, you got anything else for Greg?
What are we doing whenever the protestors crossing the coal county?
Be happy to talk to you on Thursday. It's on the agenda.
Okay, I was curious, are we gonna be letting them block traffic and do whatever they may, just to run everybody else's life and?
I had two phone calls come down that morning since when I was up front, wanting to know what we're doing.
We'll, we'll be in here on Thursday and close.
There is a right to protest.
But not to be a public nuisance.
And trust me, you don't, you don't wanna live in a country where there's no right to protest.
But not to be a public nuisance and interfere with everybody's life, whatever in pursuit of happiness.
You tell me where the line is, when, when is your right to protest?
You wanted protest in the middle of Highway fifty, then you also got the right to get run over.
It's just a question, where do you draw the line?
That's disturbance of the peace.
Also, you have it, all protests theoretically disturb the peace then.
If you're blocking traffic?
Don't they, but any protest, even if you're walking the sidewalk, cause I wanna walk down the sidewalk, it's in the way.
No, you're not stopping somebody, you can walk around that, you can't drive around them.
What?
We had them downtown Saturday.
That's fine, they can be downtown, they have their signs.
They walked on the.
Don't have a problem with peaceful protest when you're walking down middle of the highway. Come on in, join the conversation, Chris.
I doubt this'll take long.
Well, let's see.
One fourteen.
One, one, four.
Floor's yours, sir.
Can we keep media, where'd Jeff go, I was like, can we keep media away from it? That might help, too.
Floor's yours, Chris. Hmm? Floor's yours.
Oh, um, well, I was just going to request that we go back to, uh, the number that I recommended for the department budget for two thousand and fifteen. Um, right now, I have a residential appraiser position open, which is thirty-two thousand starting. Uh, I hope to, in the next year, find a commercial appraiser, which will be somewhere between forty and fifty thousand, I hope on the lower end of that, and I am considering putting on one field appraiser, and somebody to work the field, go out and measure buildings and things like that. I have a contract person who does that, and I want the new person to learn from him. Um, the person that I have is elderly, and I don't know how long he's gonna keep doing it, so I wanna kinda get somebody to be able to take over for his place if it becomes necessary. Part of the reason for the additional people is the, um, years of experience that have been lost over the last year or so, uh, having me, uh, having my deputy leave, that also took away my commercial appraisers, so we've got a lot to make up for there. And right now, I've got five appraisers, and three of them are in almost constant training. Um, two of them have, I think, just over a year, year and a half with, with my department, and they're coming along real well, but I'm gonna need somebody who's there to fill the positions while other people are training. And, you know, I might get a couple years down the road and find out that, once everybody is trained up to the level they need to be, that an extra position will not be necessary. But I think that's about it.
Debbie, where's the saddle now?
As far as the people go?
No, as far as every, the, that, spreadsheets and stuff, we're, I can't find it.
On the people?
Same place, so I'm in budgets, department, and elected officials.
Okay, get back out of there, or you just?
Get out of there.
Are you looking for his budget? Can I see it, tell me what you're looking?
I'm looking for the same stuff that Greg gave us, and everybody, everybody else, and it's all been under budgets, department, and elected officials.
Okay, go on to it.
Uh-oh.
You don't have assessors?
No.
Going down.
Department.
We're gonna give you a ten.
There you go.
Or get you out of, get you out of the car, maybe live right.
Send it asking.
Just so long as I got air conditioning.
Assessors.
In the summer.
They may have not asked for that.
I know we won't have to ask the, the right questions. Oh, yeah, there we go.
Cause I would've never gone. I thought, I thought I, I don't, it's not out there. Are you adding to the list?
Is there, hey Chris, that stuff that you were talking about, the positions and that, is that in the packet you gave the auditor?
Yes, it should be.
Okay.
I, I believe I put additional those positions in there.
Cause we don't have that.
Send them down where they have.
It's possible that the, uh, field appraiser position is not in there, because I lost, uh, my residential after budget was done, I think, um, and he hasn't been replaced yet. I've got, you know, funds that I could do it this year, but I have to make sure the funds are there next year for them. So I could either put somebody on in the middle of this month, or I could wait till January to put somebody on, but since it's a reassessment year, we're gonna need some This past year, I've added, uh, one additional personal property clerk, assessment clerk, uh, and the reason I did that is, we found that some of the appeals that we're getting into, the information is just not there on what some of the businesses are claiming, and we're gonna have to do a little more auditing than we have in the past. Usually, they just come in, they hand in their sheet, and we go by that, or we're finding that some of the information is not complete. And, and a lot of it is just because they've forgotten to do it, sometimes they've gotten rid of equipment and failed to take it off, sometimes they've gotten equipment and failed to put it on. So we're gonna do a little more auditing of the individual accounts, and that's more with the commercial than it is personal property, uh, vehicles and such.
And we were talking about your software, is there any updating on that?
The last that I talked to Dave, we were wanting to go before certification, but I don't think we're gonna be up until after certification this year. He's got a lot of stuff put in already, but I don't think that we're gonna be on it before July first, it'll be after that, for the, uh, real estate. Personal property is up and running and doing quite well, I believe.
Do you have any more fine items?
No, I think we're pretty good, everything else, just gonna be lots of training this next year, trying to get these people that aren't certified up to certification level, of course, it's a two-to-four-year process for a residential, and about six years for a commercial. And the problem I have, getting somebody certified commercial, is I have to have a commercial appraiser supervise anybody who's training for that, which is some of the changes that the board has made, and it's really, it's, it's almost gotten, in my opinion, ridiculous for the amount of training that you have to have to become a commercial or residential certified. You know, you're, you're talking about at least six years, up to eight years to become a commercial appraised, certified, and anywhere from four to five years for residential.
I'm hearing you right, so we're gonna replace that one position that's open right now?
Yes.
Everyone an additional field appraiser.
Two. Well, the, I don't have a position open for the commercial right now, but I haven't put anybody in the deputy slot, chief appraiser, I've taken, um, my two most experienced people, and one's taking care of commercial, and the other one's taking care of residential. I've got three people, one has about three years on, and he's getting close to his residential certification, the other two are kind of helping out both in the commercial apartment and in the residential apartment. Neither one of them is certified and did not come to the department with, uh, real estate experience, so they take a lot of training, but they're coming along quite well. Did that answer it?
Well, I'm still not sure. Right now, in that twelve slots that we have, uh, what position, there's one that's the residential appraiser that's open, and then the field appraiser, are you talking those two together, you're talking about making one a commercial and making one a field?
No, what I'm talking about is filling the residential that's open.
And adding new.
And then adding a commercial appraiser, commercial certified, that's required, I'm not gonna hire anybody for that position that's not certified. I want somebody who is state-certified, commercial appraiser, and then one other person is a field appraiser. Those two should be additional slots over and above what we already have.
And the only other question I have is on the professional service, I know currently we're in that one big suit, and so.
You mean, computer services?
Uh, no, professional services, as far as the attorney bills.
With the Ammer and.
For the Ammer, I can assure you, we need to quite increase that.
I didn't carry it forward, I didn't know where the keys were.
Oh, okay, no, um, however you all wanna handle, you know, if you wanna put, I guess the same amount that we put in this year, I mean, I signed a paper to put.
Less whatever we've expended, I assume.
Unless you're gonna tell me it's over, then we don't need to worry about it.
No, it's not over yet. It's not over.
So you just need to roll it over?
Yeah.
Less whatever we've paid out of it.
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, there should be a purchase order out there, so you're just gonna roll it over.
Yeah.
Want to check this out?
Well, I think the last time I looked at it, we were just at thirty, forty thousand.
Sounds right.
Close to half, yeah, what we were intending to, and then, what I understand, we were gonna pay it all, and then we were gonna go to the schools after, after we reached out.
We're gonna pay the first hundred. We pay our first, whatever we said, hundred, hundred, I don't remember what the amount was. We pay the first big chunk, and then after that.
Yeah.
And that, what, where is the case at, they're still in discovery?
Oh, we're still in discovery, yeah.
Okay.
They're, they're fighting over, have they given us enough information or not? I'm sure you're familiar with that.
Shocked at.
Yeah, so we keep going back and saying, "No, we need this additional," and.
The suit with Cape Girardeau County?
That's the test case, is Cape Girardeau, that's why.
When I talked to Clint, he was saying that Boone County was the, they had dropped the suit.
Boone County went before all the rest of us got involved in it.
They settled.
They went on their own.
They went out on their own, they didn't get part of the team.
Yeah, they didn't become part of this.
So Cape is the test case.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Boone County went and hired these people that the rest of us are using prior to the group of us getting together.
They got too much money.
What?
They got too much money.
The Ammer?
Boone County.
Boone County?
They got a bunch. That's true. Now, the Boone County assessor, and I don't know if this matters, but the Boone County assessor had stated that he was willing to put some money into the kitty for the, what is it, nine counties that are going together. He was gonna put some money into there. Yeah, he had stated that, now whether that comes about, I don't know. I, I won't speak for what's going to happen, just what I heard.
Thanks for the update. Okay, has got anything else for Chris?
Okay, I don't think so.
That's it? Thanks, Chris.
It's been fun.
Thank you. Yeah, budgets fun, I don't hear that very often.
Yes, but I only have to do it once, you all have to do it over and over and over.
I only have to do it for a couple more days.
Larry Rodman is not gonna come up with what we have in the budget that's fine.
Okay.
Mark, he is in the middle of some interviewing witnesses, so he probably won't be here till two forty-five. So we can, I've got other stuff.
Do you have any mystery stuff?
What other stuff do you got?
No, I meant budgets.
Can I go to you for one question real quick?
Sure.
Are, were we gonna add a line in the budget for the amount that's gonna go to the lawsuit, the Ameren? We haven't done that yet, but...
Well, we were just gonna take out professional services, but that's what I was thinking, I would have to budget the whole expense. And then on the other side, I'll put the revenue in, as far as what will come back. Because we have the contract with that particular attorney to do it, so I'm thinking, we're gonna pay it all, we're gonna ask them for a few percent.
So we're just gonna put it into professional services? That work for me? All right, thanks.
Other than, you already seen the, the law enforcement fund? Spreadsheets as far as...
Sam, you oughta sit down and look through that with Debbie at some point. It's, uh, what we did was we created a long-term spreadsheet. The sales tax for law enforcement is a half cent until twenty twenty-two?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
It is twenty twenty-two, so it's twenty-three.
So, and then it rolls down to three eighths of a cent. So that spreadsheet, the concern we've had for a number of years was revenue was stagnant, expenses continued to go up. We watched that cash balance go down to where it went negative, and we couldn't, couldn't fund the law enforcement fund anymore. The combination of sales tax, the GR transfer was less than what the expenditures were. Debbie put this together on a big, long spreadsheet that goes out to twenty twenty-three. And we've kind of indoctrinated, for lack of a better term, the sheriff's department that this is what we go by in making budget decisions, because this shows, if you give two hundred thousand dollars worth of salary increases, it automatically chugs it through all those years and shows what happens to the bottom line. Because at least our position so far has been, the commission will not contribute any more GR. You have to live within your own means. We contribute two million dollars, two million forty thousand dollars, which was what we contributed when the tax was passed. And we agreed that we wouldn't cut it. So in return for us never cutting the two million forty, they don't get any more. So that's, that's why we look at this long spreadsheet, and you can play with it. Um, we, we frequently do, we'll change salary increases, we'll change, we'll put in capital improvements, we'll take out capital improvements, and it all makes that bottom line move. And it allows us to at least kind of get an idea of what happens long-term. Cause it's a fund that is right on the edge.
And it, and it really would be in the negative too, as far as we have now been taking nine-one-one costs out of that fund. We have now been taking a three percent admin fee out of that fund since, uh, when was that, two thousand and ten? And if we were, uh, obviously it'd be upside down, the commission made a decision then not to be upside down.
They've got so much money in EMS.
I'm not taking any more capital out after this year. And the capital, I know it's a one-time cost, but it still can...
How do you, I guess my thought on that would be, how do you justify doing that one? This isn't the primary, this isn't the...
Right.
Hundred percent of the call feature. I don't know.
I mean, you take this, right now, and part of that out of GR, is that right?
Because this fund can't hold it.
Do we ever get a breakdown from the city as what percentage are law enforcement calls versus...
We have in the past.
I'm not sure if we did, this is just last night, was that what it was last night?
Uh, we just have to ask for it, they provided, it's not, it's really not been an issue. They just, we just asked for it periodically and they provided. It's been a couple of years, I think, since we've seen that breakdown. But as I recall, breakdown was fifty, about fifty-fifty sheriff and EMS, and that's why we kind of use... It wasn't exactly, but it was close enough that that's how we broke it out.
I wouldn't mind looking at some of the capital, since the sheriff just made his capital request.
Our capital or his capital?
Well, what he's wanting out of our capital.
Well, actually, what's slated is out of his, the law enforcement fund, there's not any coming out of our capital. And that's what this...
So that three hundred and ninety-some thousands coming out of his capital?
We have three hundred and sixty-three, he just added some more here today. What's in there right now is three sixty-three, so if you add that, well, but he added some revenue, so I'll have to go back.
Yeah, and also he's going, when he flips those cars, they're gonna sell them, so there're gonna be additional rev, I mean, it's...
Well, and the money that he has left over in capital is kind of figured into his carry forward already. It's not like it's additional money that's still sitting there, it's already considered in his carry forward number.
But if he just added, turn that, we went from, what was he at, three thousand or, we went from, oops, not three thousand. We went from fifty-one thousand to...
Seventy-six or something like that.
Well, I mean, in the end, they're gonna trade in the cars, they think they're gonna get about fifty, sixty thousand a year by trading in the cars. That's gonna have a little bit of, I mean, there's just a lot of unknowns out there.
But do we do all of that at one time, or do we try to do a couple of cars, a couple of personal cameras at one time? You know, sit there? I guess that's what we sit and talk about whenever we start doing this, line item by line item.
Well, and the camera thing, do you do everybody with a camera, or do you do?
Yeah, twenty-two cars and how many people?
This is seven, seventeen, he went seventeen cars and vehicles, has he got five that already have cameras, and is that what he said?
How many people are on, uh...
I think they do have five.
On the road at a time, or that would need it? Do you have three, or do you have, you know, a couple of backups? So do you need thirty cameras?
They all have their own car.
Well, they all have their own cars.
Do you need nine? Well, I'm not talking about the cars, I'm talking about the personal one. So, you know, but then do they have to come in here and pick it up? A lot of them hop in their car and go.
You get it to the point too, or you're gonna run it twenty-four-seven, you're probably gonna go through cameras faster than if you have more that you use only certain shifts.
I don't think it's a bad idea at all to have that kind of stuff for...
Not that I'm aware of any lawsuits or anything going on, and would have helped us. I don't, I don't...
Well, and there are cases already...
The problem is, the problem is, yeah, it's the one, it's not, it's not the, we haven't had one yet, it's the one you do get.
And why do you have all these little counties?
It's kind of like...
I don't know how these little counties...
But, but it's kind of like this, you know?
We were talking to some of these commissioners at Nellis Lake, I mean, you got a county with thirteen thousand people in the whole county.
You know, it's like we pay for insurance. And we may go a whole year and our property insurance, we pay a hundred thousand dollars for it and we get nothing out of it. And you sit there and you go, well, that's like four years in a row, we really haven't had any big claims, I don't know why we're paying a hundred thousand dollars a year for property insurance, let's cancel it. And then the next year, boom, you get a boiler explodes and it's a four million dollar hit. And you're like, why did we cancel that? Oh yeah, Debbie said, hey!
Along those same lines, I mean, you're looking at our maintenance agreements. And we self-insure with stuff, why don't, would we be beneficial to self-insure ourselves on some of these computers? Some of these computers, we could replace for cheaper than what we're paying the service agreement on, so...
Well, and you get some...
It doesn't work without that.
But what happened to us, though, we said? I mean, they come in, I don't understand why those...
They dial, they dial in.
Gets an update? Like, your phone will have a problem? Because they've updated all those stuff and your phone's not working, and you'll see, oh yeah, I got an update, I just need to update my phone. It updates and everything works? That update is what the maintenance fee basically is. So there's a change in federal reporting requirements for taxes. And you have to comply with it. If you have the maintenance update on World dot, or what it is, no, New World, it just goes right in, they dial in at two-thirty in the morning, they fix it, and you're withholding the right amounts and it's reporting properly. If you don't do that, you don't pay for it, the system keeps working, but you don't know that you're not getting the proper documents. And then at the end of the year, the IRS sends you a letter saying, you didn't file a form such and such and such and such, and that's a three thousand dollar per form penalty. And you're like, well, why didn't we do that? We have a system, and we didn't get the upgrade.
And I'm at mercy at a little point now.
And that's how it is all these software systems. And look what happened when Microsoft just announced, we're done with XP. I mean, it, it's a racket, I don't doubt it, but, you know?
We got, what, a million dollars in maintenance contracts? Damn near, okay, half a million, we got a bunch.
It's a ton. And it's almost all software.
Rodman's not coming up at all today, then?
What'd you say about him?
He may have said that he wanted another position, but he did not give me any dollar figures or...
I don't know, even his requested budget didn't have enough in there to do all that, did it?
His key here, Ralph is gonna be wanting new software, lots of new software.
Haven't talked to LV, LV said he'd pay for it. He did.
For Ralph?
Yeah. Ralph Bray. What does he got? I know that he's gonna pay for everything that Ralph wants, but he said he'd help him out, so...
Marvin's got what, two ninety? I was gonna say, wait a second, that guy's always bleeding poverty over here. About to go dead. I didn't bring my cord up like they did. Here, you can plug your, you can plug your cord into your own computer. Mine's sitting in my desk, I just...
Two hundred? Why are we saying that, ten thousand?
Ten thousand? More than ten? Oh, he pays them out there too, he pays ten out there, he pays ten out here.
So I'm a little confused, um, the sheriff has money in his budget for capital?
He does have money left, uh, well, the reason why he does have some, we did transfer our money because of the purchase of those leased vehicles.
But he hasn't left it in his budget, I'm sure to do three hundred.
In capital, okay. So he might need a little bit from us if he's at three ninety-seven.
Well, depending, he just added, what, twenty thousand in revenue, so he picked up some of it.
Then we spent about twenty thousand extra for the capital.
I know, but I'm saying he'd get to a wash if you added the twenty on both sides, he's...
See, he's got about sixty thousand left this year.
In your, uh, long spreadsheet, did you have, uh, the raises and stuff in, in the salary line? The raises that Kirsten put in, not the raises that he asked for?
Just the raises, Kirsten.
His were a little extravagant.
I'm surprised we didn't go into that one, I guess. He's satisfied with what's there.
I think it's coming, you made the comment, it's still coming.
He's been in store twice.
Who's that?
All the board's changes.
Sure.
Oh, what was that he emailed us, I didn't even look at it?
I didn't get it.
I voted no against it, so I didn't care.
The sheriff emailed you something already?
Yeah, he, he emailed us some.
And people leaving, and how many people losing? I didn't look at it yet.
How many people he's lost in one, three years?
Until y'all...
Which I don't think that's a fair, um, look at, he's lost either, cause included in that is like the rest of whom, and those kind of people. Yes, they resigned because they were given the option to resign, but to me, that shouldn't be included in...
The longevity.
Well, the people that have resigned to take another job somewhere else or something. The ones you force into resignation to me are different than the people that leave on their own, well...
But they need those statistics to make it better. I, I like to see that spreadsheet though, but he's doing a different one.
I think he's gonna present something to you.
On what? Oh, yeah. He also, uh, he also terms a lot of people. He terms a lot of people.
Yes, he does. Well, that's what I was talking about.
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry.
His, his spreadsheet of people that he's lost is kind of skewed, because he gives them the option to resign.
He, he, he terms a lot of people. In particularly the jailers. He's, he's booting them left and right.
And I want you to know that we were talking about how this basically works, is could we keep starting over with new people? You know, we keep bringing the pay scale down, where it should be, but the turnover has helped to, to alleviate that, all those issues.
I have to leave at three?
Well, I'm not sure if he's gonna end up coming.
Well...
You wanna check and see if he is gonna come?
Who are we looking to?
Okay. I could be in St. Louis by five thirty-nine.
Have to go to Cap Reg, it's Port Governor's Center.
I forgot about that.
I was supposed to do that. I was supposed to do that ticket, but I can't do that, because I could be in St. Louis.
I can't remember if ours will be feed for, I just, I completely forgot.
That's like Thursday and Friday, there's so much stuff going on, it's like...
Friday night, I got my law office Christmas party for our clients in St. Louis. So I've missed Thursday and...
I think we're still having living windows.
I, I've missed, I've missed living windows for the last eight years.
Everybody's just scared to death that it'll be disrupted.
You know, maybe it's gonna be a peaceful protest.
Protesters wanna peacefully walk around, why do we have a problem?
Yeah, I, I don't have any...
So it's not middle of the street?
Broad Chapel and...
If the street's closed, I'm careful, not middle street.
Oh, well, if the street's closed, yeah. You know, the way I look at it is, is I told the sheriff this the other day. Sheriff, I was sitting with the sheriff, the deputy US marshal, and one of the high patrolmen, I said, if they wanna march down the street and call the cops every name in the book, I'm fine with that. That doesn't bother me any. But if they start tipping over dumpsters or breaking windows, you gotta come down like a ton of bricks on them. Because once you let a couple of them do it, then they all get the idea, it's okay.
Okay, define march down a street, a closed street, or Highway fifty, that's gonna impede me from getting to my job?
I'm happy to let them walk down Highway fifty, cause you can drive right, you can take the exit before and go around.
Not between Lynn and, there's no exits in Lynn and Loose Creek.
Or Loose Creek, they're marching to Jeff City, they're marching to St. Louis. You know, it's like if they march down I seventy and they stop I seventy, nine other highways you can go around. It just, I mean, we, we have to live in a society that tolerates peaceful protest. And that's the critical word.
You're encroaching on my rights to get from point A to point B, impeding my peace.
They marched downtown, everybody kind of looked at them, just kept doing what they were doing. They didn't really lock your doorways, they didn't, uh...
And if it's just the NAACP, there's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, WT Edmondson and the chapels, and I mean, it's, it's...
What I worry about is the hangers-on that decide to come down, you know?
I think what got the business community upset was when Family Dollar, was it Family Dollar, the one over on Madison, closed up and boarded up and shut down last Wednesday.
Oh, I didn't know they did that.
Oh yeah, they, I guess...
They get threats?
One of theirs was one of the stores that was burned, torched in Ferguson. And I guess their corporate just made a decision, I don't know if somebody made threats to them saying, we'll burn all your stores down or what, but Jim Wish, Wednesday afternoon, uh, it's got the, the wood over it, and they even took the, the doorknobs off the doors. And those are boarded over. And I'm sure their employees are just hourly employees, so, you know, you're hitting them. Christmas is not a good time to be laid off.
That's the worst thing of all, in my opinion, is how, how much impact that has on...
Hi, Mark.
Hey, how are you?
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Sam, how are you doing?
It, it has so much impact upon these, well, business people, obviously, they're also the employees. There's so much impact on them, and right at Christmas time, and they don't care, they burn the building down, they don't care.
Hi, Mark.
Hey, how are you doing? Well, media has some blame for that.
A lot of blame.
Yeah, but law enforcement's got a look at what we do too. It's unfair too, and it's our ethical rules that we can't go out and say, he was knocked shot in the back. Because courts can say, you're trying to prejudice the future. But in this case, I think, I think it's gonna come out that, that we have to say that, because once that circulates for several weeks, then you got all these people that now they, they reject the grand jury finding, because they're latched on to the murder in the street. But it's just horrible.
I thought Bob did a really nice job.
I think local, all local places, but when you get the national and the regional, they don't care. But also, like I said, when you're a police chief, and the guy's body's there and there's not one... and the guy's body's there, and there's not one shot in the back, somebody has to say something. And that's why I think is the difference gonna come out there, but it can't be the prosecutor, 'cause ethics, they nail us on that.
I thought Bob McCullum did a nice job, and I thought his press conference Monday night was really, really well done.
I thought so too, but it, it by and large gets rejected, and the view of twelve jurors gets rejected. And they're coming here. I mean, merchants have to worry, I think, you know?
Hopefully it'll be peaceful.
Floor's yours. We're not as close to East St. Louis as far as.
Keep my old wordsville.
No, Wardsville could use some of that.
I don't know if people will slow down, they start walking out of the road, we'll slow down if it's a chicken or a cow, but.
All right, I think I'm gonna stop Jeff before he says something that might incriminate him. Mark, why don't you, why don't you jump in?
We'd be held hostage by people like that.
The, uh, I always try to give you an update on the office, and last year, according to the OSC, which goes on a fiscal year, from the year before, we were nine percent higher in felony cases filed in circuit court, we're twenty-one percent higher on felony cases filed in associate court, and eight percent higher on misdemeanors filed in the county, which is another indication of a busy office, and an office that has always come in, I think, under the budget that the commission has approved. Once again, I request, uh, an assistant prosecutor, given the increase in caseload and the increase in sub-serious cases, and people ask if, is it that the crimes are going up? And I don't think the crime rates are going up as shown by the statistics that are kept, however, law enforcement is catching more of the crimes. And just one example is, twenty years ago, we would have clerks that could not remember who brought in a forged check, or, or did something, and now it's on video, so we get the evidence, the law enforcement goes back, there's the video, and many times we recognize, or law enforcement recognized the repeat offender, and are able to make a case. So, it's gonna make our court system busier, as law enforcement develops more tools to expose and catch more criminals, and I think we're unfortunately gonna be busier due to the repeat, uh, drug addict, uh, who have hit bottom and are stealing to support their drug addictions.
How much is the salary on that AP?
I believe about forty-two to start, is, is I think what I started the system at.
I think that's a good investment.
And, uh, let's see. That's about it, I don't know, uh, that I have anything more really to ask, other than that, that that help would be necessary. Courts, we're also a function of, we have four judges, which we've had since, well, when I started in eighty-five, we were four judges, a lot more cases get put into the system. And, and to alleviate that a little bit, our court has brought in judges, one judge from Osage County fairly regularly, and a judge from Montomb County fairly regularly. And sometimes I'm asked, if you have another assistant, can they actually function to get more cases through the court? I think if our court continues to do that, then an assistant does benefit our county, because we do have these two judges coming in on a fairly regular basis, uh, and, and so that'll help in the short term. And then, of course, if, and when the legislature approves an additional judge for Cole County, uh, then certainly the need to have an extra assistant will be higher. I think we need one now.
I think we should get one now.
I have five that do criminal, the two that are in child support are in the regional child support office, which they do five counties, including Cole, and, and by their agreement with the state, they're not allowed to do any criminal, uh, work other than child support, so I can't use them on anything else. Yes, they will try to do that too as well. Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions?
We don't have anything on capital.
No, we need to take care of that, Alex, I'm promising to.
We're doing three capital cases.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna be fun, isn't it?
So, the, the, they're real battles, I found that out, in terms of time and finances as well.
Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thanks, you all.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, I mean, I gotta go free, I don't know, else we're gonna get done in ten minutes, we've been at it all day.
Well, we got down to here quick, so that's good.
Yeah, they'd be an easy budget cycle.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I, I will say, with respect to the PA's office, just by a little back way history, we've had a lot of struggles with the PA's office. We have, every year that I've been here, we've asked Mark if he needs more people, and we've always told him that we'd provide more people. A number of years, he said, no, I just wanna give my people some big salary increases, and we wouldn't do that. But we've always said, your volume's been up, and they've been up pretty much every year, we'll get you more people if you need them. So I think he's finally taken advantage of that.
But he also makes a good point that, no matter how many prosecutors you have, if it doesn't get through over there, it's not gonna matter, so, it's kind of a, so, but like you said, he's taking advantage of us offering to.
We've always been consistent on that, if he needed another prosecutor, we'd get it for him, that was something.
'Cause it seems like the numbers have gone up there every year.
It's cra- if you go, have you been over there for Law Day? From the law, you should go over some Wednesday morning and just go watch a criminal law day.
It's more fun than watching people at the mall.
It's crazy.
It's pretty neat.
Have you gone over there, yeah, it's amazing, the hallways are filled, you go in the courtroom, the courtroom's filled.
But Donnie, now you're coming, he'll sit you in the jury box.
And I mean, they run, they'll run a hundred, they'll run a hundred cases during a couple of hours. And then they'll come back and do another hundred two hours later. And they can't keep up.
So, are you thinking that we're gonna fund assistant prosecutor in, in Mark's salary, or?
I would, we've always offered him that, just saying that, you know, if you need, if you need pro- if you need bodies to do the prosecution, we would pay for those. He wants to use.
Of course, you know, he did get a thirty-three thousand dollar raise.
I know, but he can't give that to anybody else. I hate that. But we'll talk about that in two weeks when we come back, in two weeks, we do budget?
He's got a pretty hefty surplus, and his, his fund too, Danny.
Not this Thursday, this Thursday, we got massive agenda. And then we have the Echidiva meeting at eleven, which I reinforced to our friends this morning, that we will start at eleven. And that we're out of there as soon as possible, we don't have all day to sit there in another meeting, and they agreed.
I'm sure you didn't give them much choice.
I did, I was also very candid with them about it too.
Do you know what they're actually gonna, 'cause I think the last time they talked about downtown.
Oh, no, this is what, this is gonna be a discussion about, and you can look at this folded-up page, and it'll give you some idea.
You get that, this might be the confidential copy.
That's the confidential copy. I gave Tim first.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, wait a minute.
They, they want, they want to talk about, what do we want from them next, in next year, what do they, you know, what are the demands, what are?
What do we want, we don't know, when do we want it? Now!
So.
Sorry.
Shaver.
And I told them that they have, they're gonna need to defend what they've done.
What does that look?
We're renegades, we don't want.
Actually, it's a funny joke.
I don't know, I read L. Williams' letter to the.
What do we want, we don't know.
And you're in Denver, Brandon, on that transformation thing. I read it, you know, it was in black and white in the newspaper, apparently that was news that was fit to print.
Like you said, you know.
He went after me today for, for on the radio show hanging up on him.
He didn't even spell your name right.
He did spell my name right.
I think he does that on purpose, I think he does it on purpose, he thinks he's probably making you mad. And the board of realtors, I mean, they're out to get everybody, I mean, they're such.
You guys, why'd you guys get so nasty? You opposed income tax reform too, you know that?
You can have London run against you next time.
Do you know the realtors oppose reducing the income tax?
On what?
They're the, the income tax, reducing the rate income tax, the realtors are the single biggest group that opposes, aside from the social welfare groups, that opposes the elimination income tax. Because they believe that without the income tax deduction for home mortgages, no one will buy a home. And I know that when you bought your house, and you bought yours, and you bought yours, and I bought mine, and the ones you bought, and you're, I know we all sat there and went, hey, if I didn't get that income tax deduction, I wouldn't buy that house.
I don't know if it's so much that they oppose that.
Remember saying that when you bought your house? Wow, I love that house, but gosh darn it, I don't get income tax.
I don't think that was, that they oppose that, they, they more oppose the.
Some of that, and it got you to itemize deductions, but anymore, you, you can't really get there.
I think it's more against the fair tax thing overall that affects some homeownership stuff.
That's the only homeownership.
And I know that you and Minda Hall have talked.
It's the only home, homeownership issue that, that's, they are, their number one thing is preserving the home interest deduction, 'cause they truly believe, I'm shocked at it, because I've argued with realtors about it. You find me one person that bought their house solely, or even in substantial part because they got an interest deduction, now, when they had the credit, remember the homebuyer credit?
Yeah.
I do know people that bought houses because of that.
A lot of people realize that they had to pay that back, or they got hit on taxes later, um, but I don't think most, I don't think most people get there anymore, do they? You don't get to deduct that interest.
You gotta have, I can't remember what the.
You gotta have two X, Y.
I can't remember what the mortgage value is before you get to it.
I mean, maybe in those first couple of years, if you're lucky, but the, the, I mean, if you're doing the easy form, you don't ever get there.
The, the year you finance your house, if you pay points, um, and you have a fairly decent size mortgage, like over, I think it's about over a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand, you will have, you will, the optimization will make sense for you, but after a year or two, you drop back under.
And you're right, we don't go to budget till next week, Wednesday, what are you looking for from me? Just this, we're gonna go over each budget, people.
We want you to find some money, 'cause we've got windows to pay.
Per my request, I'd like to start with law enforcement and capital improvement sales tax. Those are the two that I think we should do on the eleventh?
Ten.
Tenth. I think those are the two we should, if we got, if we get done with those two, and we got more time, there's all sorts of ones we can plow into, but those are the two, two of the bigger, trickier ones.
Okay, other than the spreadsheet's already there, and I'm updating them, I need to update them, um, if you need, if you think of anything else, let me know.
We will do so. We will demand more information. I'm demanding answers, I don't know what the questions are, but I'm demanding answers. All right, I entertain a motion to stand in recess.
Second.
All his favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Did you get the email about new commissioner training? From the Missouri Association of Counties?
I, I haven't even.
Okay.
Is it on their website?
I got an email, I have to, I'll take it.
No, I think you can sign up, you have till sometime here in December.
Tomorrow is the first.